It is August twenty fifth at six o'clock. And I call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Dunwoody City Council to order. Unless there's an objection, seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Price, can you lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. Above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Chief, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This time I'm going to call up Officer Aaron Barone and Officer Scholar Lewis. Okay, first Officer Barone joined us from the Athens Clark County Police Department, where he served as a police officer since two thousand twenty-two. I guess the award is getting out over there. This is the third Athens Clark County Officer we've hired from there. So very, very, and very pleased with the first two, and he's doing an outstanding job as well. His previous work history includes positions in armed security and hospitality. He joined our team July twenty-third of this year. Officer Scholar Lewis joined our team on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and has been serving our community as one of the founding, actually the founding, Public Safety Ambassador for over a year now. She was already post-certified, but only recently decided to join the ranks of our patrol officer. Scholar is currently enrolled at the University of North Georgia, pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. She completed the University of North Georgia Police Academy in two thousand twenty-four. She will actually be the third graduate from the Police Academy up at University of North Georgia, and they do a fantastic job with their officers. So with these two, I would like to welcome them to our team as mayor. Please swear them in.
All right, I state your name.
I.
At the same time, or?
Yes, same time, that's fine. I.
I, Aaron Barone.
hereby swear or affirm that I will faithfully, fairly, and without malice.
hereby swear or affirm that I am faithfully, fairly, and without malice.
Or partially uphold the laws of the state of Georgia.
Or partially uphold the laws of the state of Georgia.
As well as any ordinances which I am authorized.
As well as any ordinances which I am authorized.
To enforce to the best of my ability and go to, you go ahead.
To enforce to the best of my ability.
And support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God.
And the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Just gotta hold the paper. Thank you.
So first, we want to thank you for choosing Dunwoody to be your professional home. Because we know that you have a myriad of choices, and we love our community, and we love our police department, and we are so glad you are here. And Officer Lewis is exactly what I had in mind when I pushed for years and years and years to start the ambassador program, that we would bring in at least some people as ambassadors who would then want to become police officers. And so we're very excited and grateful that you have both chosen Dunwoody. Will Mayor Gertz from Athens be calling me at some point? I really know. But we're thrilled, you have our utmost support. Anything you need, anything you feel like we should know, please reach out. We are so incredibly grateful for your colleagues in the back. You make us very proud on a daily basis. You serve our community so well, and we are so grateful for the fact that y'all have chosen, and your colleagues continue to give us your time and talent. So thank you very much, and welcome to Dunwoody. All right, it's time, excuse me, for public comment. And I have cards, if you haven't turned in your card, there's, and you want to speak, there's cards in the back. Mary Kessie, if you'll approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes.
All right, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mary Kessie, and I live nearby, and I've lived in Dunwoody since nineteen eighty-two. I listened to Dominion's presentation, and do not feel Dunwoody needs more rentals on the Life South property, especially in a ninety-five-foot-high building at the corner of Ashford Dunwoody Road and Ashford Center Parkway, beating out right there. That's eight stories high and on three-plus acres. Think of the traffic congestion with these two hundred and twenty apartments, two hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, and an underground parking lot, in which I understand the residents would not have policing of it, nor they'll be offered any activities or transportation. It's strictly they'll be living there, renting. As I mentioned rentals, there are more to come across from the Marta Station at High Street and over to Hammond Drive. And you've seen what's already there. Well, goes all the way over to Hammond. We already have a ratio, I believe, of fifty percent owner, fifty percent rental. And Dunwoody does need aging in place. And I feel the Dominion Apartments would encroach on the Dunwoody feeling we have now of settled owner-occupied residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hickey. Approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a Dunwoody citizen, a proud Dunwoody citizen. I've been a citizen for over fifty years in our great city, and I'm happy to be here tonight to share my concerns about item number seven on the agenda. It's on the consent agenda. I request that you move that to a business item and for council to discuss it. This is a very, very significant matter. It continues, a continuation of the process to completely change the way that the city was set up to do business. It was set up to do business with city employees for police and city employees for management. Everybody else was intended to be a contract employee. The removal of these twelve, twelve people, these twelve positions from contract to employee is almost double what we already have for employees. We have about fifteen that I could count. These twelve, if you take their median salary, reflects about a million dollars a year in annual salaries, and if you consider their benefits and their health insurance and all that, it's a million five, over a million five per year. So that needs, this needs to be careful, careful consideration. In fact, it's probably backwards, okay? We bid this stuff out, we ought to be bidding out the fifteen existing employees to change them back to contract. We've got this horse before the cart. We need to go the other way around. I think also this needs to be postponed to become a part of the budget process. We've been pretty silent when the budget process is going to take place this year. Usually there's some notices out as to when the process will be available for citizen input, but there's nothing out there. I need to get my days planned, okay, to participate and watch and observe and have a good time. So I'd like a little notice of when the budget is going to be open for public participation. The other question I have is whether or not these twelve jobs, when they become non-contract positions, are they going to be posted for public, for the public to apply for? I mean, there's some of these jobs even old guy like me might want to do, okay? Got nice money and nice benefits, and so I think that we ought to open them up to the public when we remove them from a contract employee. So again, I'm requesting that this be taken off of the consent and moved to action, and furthermore, that it be delayed and to become a part of the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali. All right, thank you. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello, City Council. So I've come and spoken about a bunch of things over the last year. And one thing I've had kind of a little bit of a theme on was kind of the resources we give our police department, as well as different things from building a new police station, and different resources we can bring kind of more in-house, more employees we could bring in-house. One of the things that I guess I'm complaining about today is actually a common theme I've complained about before, which is Chatcom. As you're familiar, Chatcom nine-one-one is the source that we use for our police radio traffic. Couple of different departments use them. We pay them, I think, about like a buck ten a month for their resources. And I've just kind of seen more and more disappointment from them. So again, as some of you might know, I'm a soccer referee. We had an incident about ten days ago at a park in Hammond Park. All of you probably know what Hammond Park is. Chatcom didn't seem to know what Hammond Park was, which is even more disturbing. We had an incident where it was a bunch of people, luckily it was an adult game, not a youth game, but some people were on the field, they didn't want to leave the field. The referees tried to come set up the field, they came shoved, pushed. I mean, we got, you know, to that point, it started getting violent, you know, violent when other people who shouldn't be there are like shoving referees. So we called Sandy Springs Police, called in the Chatcom. I already knew some problem was there because they didn't know where Hammond Park was. Normally, and I've been doing refereeing for about twenty-one years, so whenever you call anything at a park, you normally get a lot of them very quickly, very mad. It took Sandy Springs Police thirty-five minutes to show up. And I was like, Chatcom had to botch this. So I did an order for the CAD report, which is what the officers, with the listing of the itemization of what happens, as well as the radio traffic. And I was exactly right, Chatcom completely botched it over the rate. I'm the one who made the call because I know how to say things to them. So I'm like, okay, well, this means a battery plus an assault at a park, weapons unknown. Completely botched it. So the police officers ran route, they stopped to do an information for officer, probably something of low priority, and then they showed up inevitably. So when we talked to them, they're like, oh, yeah, we didn't know it was like this serious. Well, all of them are gone now. Just an example of Chatcom botching something important. We had two other incidences that I can remember. One was an elderly man fell at an intersection when it was raining. He stumbled across, so we called it in so someone can come check on him who's bleeding. The intersection signs are right there. I gave it to him maybe five, six times. It took them two minutes and supervisor to figure out where he was, which was even more funny because it was right in front of the fire station. I was like, literally, I could just go knock on the door, they could walk out. And another incident we had, I don't know, maybe a year ago, where it was the craziest incident we've ever had in Dunwoody, where it was almost like a on-field domestic, where this man and this woman were getting into a fight. I called it in because I saw it. Four other callers called it in. It took Chatcom about four and a half minutes to dispatch the first Dunwoody police officer out there. Dunwoody responded in quick time, but by the time that happened, everything was already gone. So again, the problem is Chatcom, the solution would be if we can maybe look at bringing some of these resources over, or possibly just giving more complaints to them to see if they can kind of better their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Taylor. Approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Wendy Taylor, and I've lived in Dunwoody for twenty-seven years, and I love it here. Despite the current mayor and city council's sincere efforts, many of their collective decisions have not been in the best interest of their constituents, especially Dunwoody's homeowners and religious organizations. So I am very pleased to announce I am running for city council, as I am totally committed to representing those who call Dunwoody home, including businesses that serve our community. Let me tell you a little bit about me. I earned a master's degree in industrial and systems engineering at Georgia Tech. I'm also a degree in physics and business. I have decades of experience doing strategic planning, logistics engineering, and project management for business and government clients. Council needs members like me who can look critically at plans, drawings, and estimates. City staff presents plans to city council that are full of words like parks, trails, and development, which sound good theoretically to most of us. In the case of trails, too much of a good thing is bad. The foundation, sorry, the PATH Foundation that developed the master trail plan is in the business of selling paths to city. And they sold Dunwoody City Council on sixty-nine miles of twelve-foot-wide paths across Dunwoody. Yes, there are some great places in Dunwoody for twelve-foot-wide paths. But to put paths in where normal sidewalks would be preferable, roads are being narrowed, lanes are being removed, and traffic flows will be restricted twenty-four-seven. Many District Three neighborhoods are being negatively affected. Dunwoody North, Stevens Walk, Briars North, Madison, Cherry Hill, Four Oaks, Fountain Blue, and probably many others. Council, please raise your hand if you still think it's a good idea to add sixty-nine miles of interstate wide lanes across Dunwoody, after our citizens voted down the bond to fund them. No hands, votes. Unelected city staff have added to the comprehensive plan at the insistence of a developer that ten-story apartment buildings be allowed to overshadow subdivisions in Dunwoody North area. The city council approved this. An incumbent council member, Tom Lambert, strongly advocates for wedging high-density buildings between our owner-occupied residential neighborhoods. Who does he think he represents? Right now, he's for upping the profits of a corporation that doesn't give a lick about the people in Dunwoody. No thanks, Tom. I'd like to step in and start representing these fellow citizens. Council needs to stop buying hook, line, and sinker what profiteers have helped, profiteers helped city staff put together. Thank you all who are promising to keep our neighbors and me informed about local needs.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next is Joe Hirsch. You'll have three minutes, sir, when you get to the microphone.
So tonight, Rob Price gave the invocation, which is kind of an oxymoron coming from Rob. I want to remind you, Mayor, and everyone else on council, what Rob said at the Dunwoody Homeowners Association debate when, in two thousand twenty-one, when he was running for office. Rob said, when he was asked, what flaws does the city of Dunwoody have? Rob said Dunwoody needs to improve transparency. And that was a great comment, and I applaud you for that. But ever since you got elected and you sat up here, you've remained silent. Nothing, nothing to do with transparency. You've turned into someone who seems to have magically forgotten the city's flaws. You've demonstrated no ethics, morals, or backbones on this matter, Rob. What business do you have being re-elected? Seriously, how can we take you for anything you say seriously for your word? You've not demonstrated, your actions don't represent what you say. You should not be trusted. As you know, in the Georgia Records Act, it says that open government is essential to the free, open, and democratic society, and that public access to public records should be encouraged to foster confidence in government and so that the public can evaluate the expenditures of public funds and the efficient and proper functioning of its institutions. That doesn't apply to Rob because he forgot what he said. He's not a man of his word. You've never demonstrated any interest in improving the flaws that you cited. Rob, you've been silent about Eric Shealy, Ginger LaPage, and Sharon Lowry, each in their personal capacity conspiring to lie to me in order to hide documents to protect our former police chief. Rob, you remain silent when city clerk Eric Shealy, he admitted under oath that he routinely discards or destroys city documents, and he does not consult or observe city of Dunwoody's records retention schedule. Does that bother you that our city clerk admits to throwing things away? Apparently it doesn't. You've remained silent that the city has not adopted its provisions for the security and maintenance of records as required by OCGA fifty-eighteen ninety-nine. Silence from Rob. Rob, you've been silent, knowing that the city deletes and permits deletion of text messages without consideration for their useful life. Rob, you've been silent when Officer Manfam essentially held employees of a store hostage. Rob, you've been silent when the city responds to my records requests by demanding payments when it is not permitted to do so. You've been silent when the city obscures documents. You've been silent by arbitrarily coming up with reasons why they're delaying my records. Rob, you've been silent when our city manager, Eric Glutton, discarded his cellphone to prevent others from reading his emails, despite him receiving two anti-litem notices ordering him to preserve them. That's criminal. Where's your voice? Do you have any courage? Do you have any reason why you can explain that you don't stand by what you said? It's, maybe you'll, maybe you should prove me wrong. Good luck.
Thank you. John. I'm going to pronounce your last name wrong because it's very faint Yule. John, oh, thank you, sorry. Approach the microphone and introduce yourself if you don't mind, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is John Yule. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. I've lived here for a few years now. I just wanted to say thank you for having me up here. We appreciate it. I know what y'all do is a hard job, right? I think that's, that's clear. A lot of feelings, a lot of, a lot of strong opinions, what have you. Something that I just want, want some more information about, a little more transparency, if that's all right. I'm over in the Four Oaks area and understand that there are plans for building a big, brand-new building, all that kind of good stuff. If that's not the case, I've been misled, but there we go. There's a lot, there's a lot of rumors. I figured I might as well just come to the source. So anyways, thank you all for your time. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you. Somebody from community development in the room? If, John, if you'll get a card from our community development director, that's probably the best way to get some of your questions answered. All right, that include, that concludes, not includes, that concludes public comment. That's all the cards I have. There'll be another session at the end of the meeting if, where we will have more public comments, all right? We have a public hearing, I believe that's next. No, Michael Starling, sorry. I had turned the page.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here for the second quarter economic development update. It's a little late, but I tried to stay off some of the busier agendas you had over the past month or so. So start off with just an overview of our commercial data. This is the question I get asked most often. Twenty-five percent vacancy in our office market, that's been very, pretty much the same the past couple of years. The perimeter market, as well as Dunwoody, we have seen a good bit of leasing activity the past two years. So I will talk about why that twenty-five percent number is actually a little bit lower in a minute. Our retail's about five and a half percent. That is a tick up. It's probably one and a half to two percent higher than it has been. I think most of that is at High Street. Hundred fifty thousand square feet of retail came on at High Street. Not all of that is leased up, and that, that equals about two percent of our total retail. Apartments, as you all know, represent about forty percent of our commercial tax base. Our vacancy is just over eight percent. And our hotels from CoStar had sixty-six percent occupancy and ninety-five-dollar RevPAR, revenue per available room. Is, you take the occupancy and the average daily rate, and you come up with RevPAR, and it's what most people look like, look at when they're, when they're judging how well hotels are doing. Our office vacancy, the perimeter market as a whole is about twenty-three percent. So we're pretty much in line with them. Buckhead is at twenty-six percent, and the Cumberland Market, which is around, the Battery is at seventeen percent. So pretty much in line. I will tell you, the hotels, I discovered Dunwoody told me that this July, this past July, was the best month on record for hotels in Dunwoody. A lot of that has to do with the new element coming onboard, and it's now fully occupied pretty much, so. But things are going really well in our hospitality district. The zombie office space, as I, as I call it, is, represents almost ten percent of our total office market, and these are office buildings that as, as of right now, the owners don't really, or aren't even trying to lease them. It includes the sixty-four and sixty-six Premier Center East Building. You saw that rezoning a couple of weeks ago. They plan to convert those buildings if their zoning is approved. It includes the High Street Buildings, the two buildings that are up for demolition soon. We hope twelve-hundred Ashwood is the building behind Publix. It also, we believe, has a buyer for that to convert it to for-sale residential and fifty-six Premier Center East, which is next door to sixty-four and sixty-six. So if you take that million square feet off the market, we're closer to eighteen percent vacancy, which is, which is very much in line, I think, doing pretty well compared to other markets. Using Placer AI to sort of dig into our data a little bit more. Obviously, we all know about fifty-two thousand people call Dunwoody home. Thirty-five thousand employees come into the market every day. If you look back at two thousand nineteen, and we were about twenty-eight thousand, so we've added seven thousand since that time. So if you, if you think back, what's happened since then, twelve-twenty-four is open with Insight Global, the two, second and third building at State Farm has opened. So we are increasing the number of employees. This data is a little bit different. I would think a lot of people assumed we had more employees than that, but this comes from, from Placer AI data. There's six million unique visitors that come into Dunwoody annually, and they produce just over twenty-nine million visits. So every day, Dunwoody, we have fifty thousand people who live here, another thirty-five thousand residents, and on top of that, we have about eighty thousand, on average, eighty thousand people who come here to visit. So they're going to the mall, they're shopping, they're staying in the hotels, they're coming to meetings. So on any day between seven AM and seven PM, seven days a week, Dunwoody's probably got a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty thousand people who are here in the market. So if you want to see the driver of our economy, it really is those people who are coming here to shop and eat at our restaurants. This is a graph version of that. On the bottom is the inbound commuters. One of the interesting things is in two thousand nineteen, sixty-eight percent of our employees were inbound commuters. In two thousand twenty-four, sixty-one percent. So we've, in, in just five years, a little over five years, we've, we've increased the number of people who live and work in Dunwoody by seven percent. And so I think that's a testament to the kind of community we're building. It helps with traffic. Obviously, if you live here, you have shorter commute. The middle bar is the residents, and then that top bar is the out-of-city visitors. So as you can see, Saturday is our busiest day by far. Friday is next, and then Sunday is, is just behind that. Monday is probably the slowest, and then it picks up from there. And you can see the spikes. Around Christmas, I think we would all agree, is our busiest time. So Black Friday, the Saturday's moving up towards Christmas. So we'll be, we'll be digging into a little bit more to give you a little more insight into, into the market, especially around those employees and how that has changed over time. Public art, we've got two big public art projects we're working on. We're working with the Parks Department and the Art Commission on a temporary sculpture exhibit at Wildcat Park. We do have the art selected. We're not going to show you the art right now. We're going to sort of do an unveiling of that at a, at a future date. We are still working on some of the details, but this is expected to be eighteen to twenty-four months. So we are leasing this art from the artist. It's a lot cheaper to do that than to obviously buy twelve pieces. So we're looking forward to this. This is the first foray. We have some ideas about maybe doing a vote by residents of their favorite piece of art. Maybe we'll see if we can raise money and, and buy that art and, and keep it in the city. So a lot going on, a lot of moving parts, but want to let you know that that's coming. Second, Georgetown. Second Georgetown, uh, the Georgetown art was approved uh quite a long time ago. Uh, as you remember, we selected an artist from Poland. It is way more difficult to import art than we could have ever thought. Uh, it didn't help that we we wanted to uh have lights in this art. It was sort of designed around lights. Lot more difficult to get power uh to that specific site. And as all of this is happening, the uh, the exchange rate with the dollar and 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 the euro uh fluctuates. So this got way too expensive, so we have actually cut ties with that artist. And we're starting over, but we're leveraging the work that we've done on the sculpture exhibit. And the the consultant we're working with on that, we're gonna leverage our relationship and and. Have that person help us find uh more art. So we're gonna start over, but it's gonna be a shortened timeframe. It's gonna get. It's we're we're gonna focus on local artists, at least Georgia artists, southeast artists, so we won't have the the issue with importing the art. So that should be done much quicker. So I know a lot of you have asked about that. So. Um, I I will say in the future, we probably won't be looking at international artists for any of our other sculptures. Uh, Dunwoody Village, many of you participated uh with the Urban Land Institute. They were in town for for two days. The Development Authority uh sponsored this event and their idea was to create. Not a new vision, not a new design for the village, but to create a workable plan, a sort of prioritize next steps on how we could move. Uh, towards the vision we've we've outlaid many, many times. So about thirty uh stakeholders met with um. The consultants, these are volunteers. Uh, the Urban Land Institute brings them in. They're architects, they're developers, they're retail folks. Uh, they volunteered two days to spend in a community. Uh, they spent the first day collecting information, meeting with stakeholders. Many of you were able to meet with them. And then the second day, they spent the whole day in a charrette and and created a a report. We're gonna. Get that final report in six to eight weeks. Our plan is to have a joint meeting with City Council and Development Authority and they'll come in and present that to us and we'll move forward. So. Um, stay tuned on that. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
Questions? Questions? I just had a couple, if nobody else did. One is the apartment vacancy rate is actually lower than Metro Atlanta. Is that that? Yes, a couple of percentage points.
Yeah, and we're in line. I do have the numbers for perimeter and Buckhead. Buckhead's at eight point five, Cumberland's at nine percent, and perimeter as a whole is nine percent. So we're a little bit lower. And the interesting thing is the. Yeah, they 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 look at class A, class B, and class C product. Class A is the newest and most expensive. That has a higher vacancy rate than the class C. Which has the lowest, which is, I think, about three, three and a half percent.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, when you did all the placer AI, is that just perimeter or is that all of Dunwoody?
That's Dunwoody.
Okay.
We looked at all, we looked at all of Dunwoody. So so placer has changed since we've um. This year, they came out with market. So they started out as a as a company really focused on retail. Shopping centers, malls, they have realized that they have a have an opportunity to work with cities. CID's and other groups that look at markets. So they've put a lot of effort into looking at a market. And so. You can go in and Dunwoody is, it's already set up. All the information is there. So that's Dunwoody as a whole.
Um, and then on the zombie office space page, I have a couple of questions. One is, at what point? Do office buildings le- leave the. It are removed from the square footage of an area yet?
If they're torn down.
Only when they're torn down. So if they're rezoned, they still stay on?
I I think so. I mean, there there's obviously a little bit of of uh time in there, but I think they would stay on there until they're demolished.
And then I think we've had some wins lately though, too, right?
Oh, absolutely.
The High Street office building that they're keeping is full, as I understand it.
Pretty much. So TriNet's taking three different spaces. They're taking the new office as well as space, two floors, at least two floors in the the older office building.
And they told me they had a couple more leases in that building.
Yes, yes, things are picking up. A lot of that is local folks. Um, the terraces in Ravini have also done really well. Aon moved their office from Buckhead. Unum, which is an insurance, another insurance company, moved from from another part of perimeter.
Right.
Here. So the the perimeter market is is pretty hot right now.
And do we have any idea when the the buildings at High Street that need to come down are coming down?
I do not.
Is Richard in here? I was just curious.
They've applied for their permits. Um, they're or writing them approval, but it's probably be uh October.
That's fine. That's good. And is there any chance they're gonna um use some of that space for parking while they get ready to build whatever comes next, or you don't know?
Uh, we're in discussions whether.
Okay, it's it's a little. At that end, you want to go to the stuff down at that end. It's a little parking is a little tricky.
Right.
So, okay. Uh, Joe.
Hey, Michael, thanks for the update. Um, just level set for folks that may be tuning in. Um, and I don't know if this is worth worth putting in every quarterly update, but something like. Over the last X number of years, how much private? Investment? Has happened? In in Dunwoody as a whole from business and the corporation. I mean, High Street was what, two billion?
Uh, no, that would be the total build out. So I think High Street's somewhere around three hundred and fifty. Million. Seventy-five billion.
Sure.
Um, you know. State Farm was wa- was, you know, a billion, probably close to that, twelve twenty-four. So I can I can do those numbers.
It's so incredible, and I think it's impressive when we go out to our uh other cities in the state and they have so much economic uh. Disadvantagement and we have this huge benefit here, um, just to make sure that folks understand how. You know, that's the economic engine of the the region and it also helps our growth of our operations. Um, and many of us up here, uh, and maybe not so many in the public listening. Have attended these uh Biz Now and these other sessions where we have guest speakers and so on. Um, half the board of the Perimeter CID, Heinz, Eden's, uh, Brand Properties, GID, all these places, Brookfield. They'll sit in a roundtable and there'll be Q and A and you'll hear them talk about other other regions, other things that they're doing. But what would be nice to also articulate is what do they need for public investment? What are they looking for to enhance and attract and retain those businesses? The employees, their shops to keep economic vitality. Um, you know, we hear that, but it'd be kind of like. What what do we need to do as a government and what can we continue to do and what are they asking for for public investment? To make sure that that economic growth remains viable, you know?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, Michael. Always informative and educational. We appreciate it. Now we have a public hearing. Do you need to read this, Sharon? No, okay. Alrighty, whenever you're ready.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I have ZBA twenty-five dash sixteen before you all this evening. Um, it's a stream buffer variance request to allow replacement of a City of Dunwoody maintenance facility and associated improvements at Brook Run Park. So you can see the existing survey to the left. The area that's highlighted in blue is represents the area that's in the stream buffer. Um, streams have two kinds of um buffers. There's a twenty-five-foot state buffer. That's down here, and so they're not encroaching into that. And then a seventy-five-foot city buffer that's up here, um, and that we and that we enforce. And so. Um, the existing maintenance facility, part of the existing asphalt is already encroaching into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. Um, so it's located, as I said, in Brook Run Park off of um Decab Drive, and in two thousand twenty-two, there was a fire that damaged the building. Um, the existing maintenance facility is about over fifty years old and is not well-suited for the city's maintenance operation. Um, and so earlier this year in April, City Council approved a guaranteed maximum price contract with Muller. Purcell to construct a new maintenance facility. Um, and this uh stream buffer request is necessary in order for that work to to move forward. Um, so as a refresher, um, the City of Dunwoody is proposing to replace the existing maintenance facility with two new buildings. One will contain. Offices for park maintenance staff. That's on the left and the site plan to the right. And then the one slightly behind it will consist of a warehouse for storage of materials and equipment. Um, a paved yard for equipment and bulk material storage is planned adjacent to the warehouse building. So as part of this project, the existing asphalt in the yard area will be replaced. And so um the city will encroach into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer with eight thousand six hundred and sixty-seven square feet of concrete and fill slope. To level the yard area, install stormwater pipes and construct a parking lot, uh prompting a variance request. The total impervious surface in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer will decrease by one thousand three hundred and ten square feet as part of this project. So the existing parking area for the existing maintenance facility already encroaches into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer, making it very challenging to make any improvements to the area without. Encroaching into the buffer. Um, as I said, the impervious surface in the stream buffer will decrease by one thousand three hundred and ten square feet, which is an improvement. Um, and then the current facility drains directly to the creek and the new project will include an underground stormwater detention system to control runoff from the site. That's a big improvement. Um, for the stream water quality. Um, additionally, there's going to be some native vegetation to mitigate negative impacts from stream buffer disturbance. About. Ten trees and sixty shrubs will be planted in the area. Um, therefore, staff finds that there would be no special privileges granted and that denial of the variance could cause an undue hardship by preventing incremental changes to the property. Overall, we feel that the requested variance would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Um, based on those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the condition shown on screen here, which is just conditioning the request. To the site plan um that has been submitted. And um for clarification, I know this item says no action on the agenda. That's incorrect. This is an action item. Thank you.
Um, okay, this is a public hearing. Um, there uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing and there'll be ten minutes per side. And I will start with public comments from those in favor of this variance application. Okay, I see none. I will uh now. Welcome to the microphone. Sorry, my words are twisted tonight. Public comments from those in opposition. If you'd like to speak. Uh, there'll be ten minutes for people in the in opposition of this variance. Um. Uh, just introduce yourself so Sharon will have your name, please.
My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a public citizen from Dunwoody. I'm opposed to this request for the variance for. Basically only two reasons. This is the twelfth hour, twelfth hour. We're in process of building that facility over there. And we come now and want a variance on the stormwater runoff. You know, we only have been talking about this for a year. Why wasn't this brought up a year ago when we started talking about it? I think the two people who ought to be held accountable. Is the. Parks and Recreation Director, okay, whose median salary is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. I think she ought to be penalized, okay? For bringing this up at the last minute. It probably cost more. And the second thing. In in uh. Agenda number twelve. Okay, we're we're approving or amendment, I think it's increasing the contract for the person who's going to manage that process over there. Where in the hell's he been for the last year? Okay, we now doing a amendment to get. Approval to let the creek run closer or the building run closer. Anyway, I'm opposed to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else like to speak in opposition of this? Um. All right, seeing none, unless there's an objection, I closed the public hearing and um. Open it up for discussion, questions, et cetera, but I'm gonna start with myself. When the agenda item says no action. I am not comfortable voting on something. Tonight.
To me, I thought the question was be was gonna first be, can you take it up? You could, but because it is advertised as no action with less than twenty-four hours. I'm uncomfortable under your resolution, twenty nineteen dash zero three zero six, changing to no action to an action because of the way it was advertised.
We'll just vote on it in two weeks. Uh. Any questions? John?
I have a question regarding the impervious surface and the uh first in the stream buffer. So the impervious is gonna be going down in the stream buffer. Is that right?
That's correct.
So the overall project itself. Is it going up or down on the entire project? Is the impervious going up or down? I couldn't find that in your document.
Um. I am not sure about that.
The reason I'm asking is because Brook Run has deed restrictions where seventy-five percent of the entire park need to be with under seventy percent green space. And I need you to prove to me that it's under that before I vote on this.
I am not sure about that. I can look into it and have the information.
It's another good reason to do it in two weeks. Thank you. I appreciate it. No other questions.
Um. Joe?
Like I I read that it says the total impervious surface in the seventy-five stream buffer would see or would decrease by thirteen hundred square feet. That's what I, that's in the staff memo.
That's correct. The impervious, the total impervious surface in the buffer is.
In the buffer. Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna ask just in general if this was a non, I I have a a bit of a procedural question because it seems like we all, uh, it's like. We're approving something that we own and control. But it is what it is, the process. But I am a big fan of years of what else can we do in the park if we have additional funds? I know um. There's another item that we're using park general funds on for budget purposes. Um, if I'm just saying, um, there's some other related going above and beyond. Uh, for can we look at pervious pavers? Can we look at pervious concrete? How can we make the site more pervious in general? Um, can we do better rooftop water collection? What can we do? That that that's looking at the idea of this reduction of impervious, but right, could we look at the pervious pavers, pervious concrete, um, et cetera? So I've I've those kind of questions. And then um it does say um proposing to plant native vegetation to mitigate negative impacts from stream buffer disturbance. Um. Are we gonna go, can we actually look at legitimate stream restoration? Could we look at a specific repairian buffer restoration? Along there to really take it up a notch and do it uh better, make it better than it was. Um. And and you know, there was, there was plans on the books several years ago before I was on council. I remember. Having some initial concepts of going through all of Brook Run and doing a basically stream restoration project. I don't know. How much that would would have cost and and how that would have been done, but.
So so I think.
Politically.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think Michael Smith or someone needs to answer. Alangra's just presenting it from the cities first, like she's presenting it from community development.
Sure.
So to answer your questions, I think someone else needs to answer your questions.
Uh, as far as a uh a stream uh. Restoration project, there are some opportunities in Brook Run, not maybe not necessarily next to the maintenance facility because that's not. That part of the stream is not as degraded as further downstream, but further downstream in the park, there definitely is opportunities for. For stream restoration. I think it would um. We need to have some public discussions on that because one of the things with uh true stream restoration is you. You have to remove a fair number of trees and kind of regrade the stream to to do a a restoration that lasts. And so I think. You know, if that's something the council's interested in, we'd need to. To have some, maybe some public input on that, public meetings on that.
And then what about, or I know that you've already had the the contract, everything's in scope for uh pervious pavers or other. Site in, you know, conditions.
Yeah, we're we're trying to, the where we ended up with this is we're trying to minimize the impact on the buffer while also. Uh. Controlling other impacts and costs. I mean, originally, um. The fill slope wasn't going into the buffer, but part of the reason for the fill slope slope is to raise the site a little bit to reduce cost on. Retaining walls on the other side of the site. And also, you know, if we try to push this further out of the buffer. We're gonna, we'd have to remove more trees like up towards Peeler Road. So it's, you know, we're trying to work within the existing facility as much as possible. Um, but you know, if we if we shift it one way. Versus another, so we tried to stay close to what was originally there as much as possible.
Uh, Rob?
Not so much a question, it's kind of a partial observation. Um, we have known that this has been a stream buffer issue for quite some time. I remember the the early discussions about this mentioned that the existing site was in the stream buffer. So I'm just saying this out loud, so there's not this idea that this was suddenly thrust upon us today. Um, we've been aware until we get designs far enough along, it's not worth looking at what those impacts might be. So um, I'm just sharing that so that folks might understand why it's coming now rather than a year ago when we weren't exactly sure what we were doing with the site, so.
So I just have a quick question, which is, is given the purpose of this facility and its closeness to the creek or stream, what, while we're going, where you you're asking for variance to go into the buffer more, what are we doing? Less? Well, less, less, right, less, less, but we're going, right, we're going less.
Well, there's less pavement in the buffer, but we are.
Going close.
Going closer to the stream because of the fill slope.
Right. So what do we?
Be replanted.
What are we doing to make sure that we're not pushing stuff into the creek over time that shouldn't go in there?
Um, we're, well, we're putting in about a three hundred thousand dollar stormwater system. That's it'll be underground, but it's gonna collect all the stormwater on the site and hold it. Some of it will seep into the ground and and then whatever's left will be discharged. But that's intended to take care of the water before it gets to the stream.
Okay. All right. Just a point of information for people who might wonder why we are hearing this variance versus the ZBA. And that's because this is on city property, correct? Somebody wanna say it in a microphone, please?
Specifically related to a storm buffer, and that is sixteen dash thirty-two B one.
Okay. So I just wanted to clear that up for people, because I know I had to ask myself. All right, we will see this again in two weeks. Thank you. Consent agenda. John?
I'd like to make a motion to remove number seven rebidding of major municipal services into the business items.
Okay, um, there is a motion to remove number seven.
It does not need a second.
Oh, because it's consent agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, all right, so removing number seven to become, I think number thirteen or number, the new number twelve. Okay, the first, okay, so it'll become number nine, I guess. Um, all right, any other questions or anything on the consent agenda? I don't see any move by, was that Tom? No, do we have to vote on the motion to move it from the consent agenda?
A single member can request it be removed.
We don't have to vote.
And you're now considering, I think, the rest of the consent agenda.
So there was a motion to approve. I need a second.
Second.
Tom made the motion, Rob second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda seeing none? I call the question, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, hearing none, the motion uh passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Mr. Venicki, you are up.
Thank you, and if you would like, I have a a water model if you would like it. I was incorrectly told. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, unlike uh two weeks ago, it is not ten thirty at night, and I am not the last item on the agenda. So hopefully, the attention span will be a little bit more this evening. Um, tonight you have before you a brief introduction or reintroduction from two weeks ago about the municipal services contracts which were rebid. To start off with, I'd just like to give a little bit of background on it. Like all new municipalities, when Dunwoody was started, most all positions were done through contracted services. It's been the trend in metro Atlanta with all new cities to begin with contracted services, so you can ramp up on day one. And then on a regular basis, reexamine whether or not that's beneficial to the cities. In almost all cities, there is always one of two things happening, either a slow rollback or a full rollback like one of our neighbors did on on bringing positions into the city. Um, and we look at that here. Every five years, they're formally rebid, and throughout the five-year period, we look at them on a regular basis and occasionally bring one position in or change positions during the process. All the positions that you have that are contracted are expected or were to set to expire on December thirty-first of this year. Now, one thing, looking through this process, when we discussed this at the council retreat this spring, was that financial cost is one thing, but operational efficiency is another, and both are weighed thoroughly throughout this process. Second thing I need to point out is doing an apples-to-apples comparison gets a little complicated this time around. The last time these contracts were rebid was in March of twenty twenty. And for those that have forgotten, something happened in March of twenty twenty, and vendors gave very generous rates in their cost estimates, which locked them in for five years. The city has benefited from this arrangement, and we all knew going into this bid process, several of the bids would be significantly higher. Um, next up, let's go to the in-house positions, and let's talk a little bit about the twelve that are being proposed. Just to give some background, and you'll have to forgive me if I'm off a position or two, because I'm going off of memory. Out of the hundred and forty or so city positions, eighty-seven of them are police-driven. That means about fifty-two of them in this next upcoming budget with these twelve. It's forty now, it'll go to about fifty-two with this. There also will be fifty-four contracted positions going into the budget. So we're not overwhelmingly contracted, we're not overwhelmingly city, we've been balanced throughout this. Now, one thing I'd like to do is go category by category in these. But first, I need to mention that the cost for these is about one point eight million when benefits and retirement contributions are accounted for, along with operating costs. We projected out that the probable cost would be two point one million if we bid these out, based upon the bids that we got for similar services and how much they increase year over year. So there's actually a savings of about three hundred thousand in bringing these twelve positions in house. Now, we also need to look at, go through the categories of them. In the community development positions, we're looking at bringing in what are the professional non-line staff positions. The one that are still contracted out will be code enforcement and the like. But on these ones, there are people that deal with the public, they're one with a professional face-forward effort. The three in finance, we need to talk about, because our current vendor with that indicated before even the bids went out that they will not be participating in the bidding process. The administrative and finance positions in cities is not something companies are really aching to bid on at this point, and they are one of them that is just stepping away totally from the business. Two in public works were very limited. One is an administrative assistant, one is a capital projects manager, most of which the charge that will not be within it, we can spread it to capital projects. The GIS manager is actually a unique thing. Currently, what we do is we have two point two positions through the current contracted services. What we'll do here is we will have one full-time person on city staff managing a GIS contract instead. For us, that service delivery model works a lot better with our public works department and with community development and with the police department. The last one I'd like to mention is the two administrative positions. This is one of those that we did bid out, and when we received the bids, we only received two. And neither one of them was of the caliber that was needed for a city of our part, so we looked at it and bringing them in-house is the next best alternative. Let's go department by department on this. Community development, two bids were received, and to let everybody know, the current arrangement for community development has a primary bidder who has a subcontractor. Both of those two bid for this area, and the subcontractor was the one that was awarded this time. So in that comes, the recommendation firm is for no bid and not to exceed cost of one point one million for the upcoming year. One thing to take in mind for the community development part is we are actually removing away from the revenue sharing aspect that had been in the previous ones. In the previous case, sixty-five percent, right? He said I got it wrong last time. Sixty-five percent of the revenue is shared with the vendor and the rest of the city for permitting fees. Now, from that, that allows us a little bit of leverage in moving positions around that are contracted. But we also realize with the highs and lows, because permitting is not stable, what you ended up with is vendors who were somewhat nervous are whether they would be able to make a profit off the contract, and ourselves, in some cases, is the city not getting the best end of the deal. So in this case, what we're going to do is bring four professional positions in-house and still contract eight positions. Now, in the, as I'm calling it, the apples-to-apples closest comparison, the year-over-year change is about nine percent, which again, we said everything would be higher. We were thinking most of these contracts would be in the sixteen to eighteen percent range. So this, as far as as increase in cost is accepted. Going to the next one, this is the finance and administration one. We're bringing in the the three risk manager, purchasing manager, and the risk manager and purchasing manager, and we're the executives and the business license specialists, those three were being planned to. And the other two were the positions where when we received the bids, we decided it would be better to bring both positions in-house. Now, in essence, this year-over-year cost increase is about three percent to do this entire action. And again, we're having to create proxies for some of them. But in today's world, to bid out the financial administration positions for a small city does not necessarily is enticing to bidders. Parks is the one department which did not change at all. We kept it exactly the same. Part of this is that with parks currently in development, we need to keep it stable for now. And then as we develop parks, look at it, but if overall inclusive of new parkland and new things that we build. The year-over-year change for this would be about fourteen percent. And this is one of those, as we expected, to get a higher bid year-over-year, because in twenty twenty, people were or vendors were much more looking at trying to latch into long-term contracts. Public Works is one of those, and I need to fully disclose that there is a one-half new position in here. It's the one that we changed. We have a need for utility coordinator quite frequently, and we can contract out piecemeal. It would be better to set it up at the beginning with the vendor. Uh, we're bringing in two positions in-house, the capital projects manager and the administrative assistant, who also serves the parks department in this. Now, one thing about this, the vendor low that's picked there is our current vendor. We did only have one firm bid on public works for us. And that is, again, one of the things about bringing positions in-house, sometimes you start to look at it, eventually vendors tend not to want to bid for whatever reason the economy has. Smallness of contracts tends to be one of them. Uh, but in this case, we do have a good established, long reputation working with low and keeping it the way it is. Out of that one point five million, remember, not all of that will be charged to the general fund. Some of it will be charged to stormwater and some of various capital projects. Last or next on this is technology. Technology currently has uh their IT positions in-house. But again, the GIS manager is what's being brought in-house. Currently, we have two point two contracted vendors. We're going to bring in one city position, and in this fall, they're going to bid out a GIS services contract. That is one thing that we can do a lot of remote work on, a lot of distance work off. But we need to make sure that public works and public safety and community development all have a vendor that's responsible, being managed by an active city employee. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, questions, John?
Uh, thank you, Jay. The item before us tonight is to uh is for contract approval. Why are there no contracts in the packet?
The the contracts will be set up with the existing RFP with a special terms and conditions on top of it. Uh, the, excuse me, not special, the the boilerplate terms and conditions on contract. So what you have in the RFPs and the cost not to exceed, this is asking council for authorization for the mayor and city manager to execute contracts with a not to exceed amount as capped by council.
All right, I'm just, in the past, we've gotten the contracts.
Uh, I I don't think five years ago, you might have.
Let me give you the date.
You can pull it up. I I I might have at that time. It, the RFPs that are tied to this are what will be included along with standards, terms and.
And will those be then sent to council? I'm trying to understand why we're not getting the documents. Uh, can we get the docu, can we get the RFPs and the contracts?
Yes, sir, I can send it to you tonight from the back row.
I would be, I would really like to see that document, have that vetted a little bit. So I mean, I looked at what we did five years ago. I'm looking at what we did now. I'd like to get a little bit more information. Um, just it it it's not cutting it for me compared to what we've done in the past. Apples to apples, I'd like to see more information. Thank you.
I wanna tell a story, because I think sometimes stories are instructive. In March of twenty twenty, when we were rebidding these contracts, we already knew that Sandy Springs, which was the founder of this model of government, correct? So other places that have new cities start, they don't do things the way the new necessarily, the way the new cities in Georgia have done it. Sandy Springs was so unique that the New York Times did a big story on them. It was kind of groundbreaking and earth-shattering and a whole different way to look at local government. In two thousand nineteen, is that right, Eric, when they went to rebid or eighteen? It was nineteen nineteen. And two thousand nineteen, as we were getting ready to rebid our contracts the next year, Sandy Springs announced that they were totally abandoning the public-private partnership because they could not afford it. The loss, the difference in cost was estimated to be millions. So me, as a new mayor, was thinking, oh, my, what's gonna happen when it's us? What's gonna be our plan? Because if Sandy Springs could not afford it, there was no world in which we could afford it. Well, it just so happened that when we released our FPs about the same time the pandemic began. Is that correct? Am I getting the story right?
Almost to the day.
Almost to the day. And we got lucky in that we saw none of the increased estimates that Sandy Springs saw. Now, we're five years later. Not only has the economic reality hit our partners with increased cost, but also the marketplace is changing, and some of the firms that might have bid five years ago aren't around anymore or have opted out of local government or whatever. So not only have costs changed, the desire to do the work has changed as well, correct? They're they're not knocking down our, I can speak from personal experience, and I'm not getting the inquiries or the whatever I used to get spam email even from people, companies that do this kind of work. So I think we we were very fortunate that we did not face what Sandy Springs faced five years ago. I think um, I just think it's important to level set the conversation as to how we got here today. Um, and like you said, it's not just about cost. It's also about functionality and appropriate fit in terms of the positions. Additionally, we said, we've discussed this, even though it was late two weeks ago, was really late, actually. Um, and we, you did say that all positions will be, any positions we bring in-house will be posted open for applications, which is not true when we change contracts. It, we don't, like, when a contract changes, it's up to the contractor how they hire and who they hire. But when we bring these positions in-house, we will advertise them, and people can apply, correct?
Correct.
All right.
That's correct.
All right. I just want to tell my story. Yes.
It was on, let me take yours. Ken, is yours working there? Okay. Okay, so what I was saying was to add to Mr. Venicki's and also to yours, Mayor. Um, you're right, several of the companies, like for the example, uh, when Sandy Springs started, that company is no longer in the same existence as it was years ago. Also, one of the companies that had kind of changed is no longer interested in municipal services. So those, and those are major players, so that it has changed, the model has changed. One thing, looking at community development, you know, as Jay mentioned earlier, was the model, with us doing the cost-sharing model, shifting away from that. We are keeping the positions as bid positions that are what I call the front counter and the service positions. You know, there is the four positions you see on your sheet, the city engineer, building official, senior planner, and planner are the ones we recommend to bring in-house. Under finance, uh, y'all have approved several over the years to bring more and more finance in. That's the one contract that was, it was the the oddest, I would say, over time, and made the most sense to bring in. So there's three positions remaining there to be brought in-house. Public Works, if that's something y'all wanna look at, of course, we can always take a look at that. Uh, the the director recommends we bring these two positions in-house, the capital projects manager and the administrative assistant. They've been low employees in the past. Uh, we just wanted to bring those in here again. If something y'all aren't comfortable with, we can certainly look at that. Uh, as Jay mentioned, GIS and also the two, uh, the receptionist position, and also the executive assistant to city manager, which is also supports the mayor and supports the city council. That is a backbone position for support within our offices. So those positions, we did not get successful bids on, so Jay is one hundred percent spot on on that. We're not trying to, the model has changed in terms of the market. The mayor hit the nail on on the head on that. And you'll see a lot of cities, there are few cities that have started up, I believe Mableton was one of them, that did not go this model. Very interesting. We've been extremely successful. We were thrilled last time because of the pandemic and what it brought to the table economically, not for the pandemic, sorry, let me reword that. You, hey, you know, that's an original Lenten statement there, but kind of, but nonetheless. You're asking for a copy of the transcript.
I think y'all know what I mean. But also, we, whatever documentation y'all would like to have, we will, we'll absolutely get that to you. There's no secrets with any, with any of this. And um, staff, you know, we put a lot of time in in putting this together. Our time, it doesn't matter. We'll do whatever y'all want to do on this. But my point is, this is not something that was taken lightly as far as which positions to design to bring in-house. There's a little bit of movement there that could occur if y'all so desire. But the other ones that I mentioned, uh, we feel pretty strongly based on the market. This is the way to go. What, we're, it's your pleasure. We wanted to bring it to you as a follow-up from the last meeting and also some discussion at the retreat. So thank you.
I, anybody else Stacy question?
I just um, and I, and I said this in the last meeting too, based on the treat, on the retreat, you, y'all really put the fear of God into us as to what the increase was going to be. So in, to me, this is really good news that it, that it is an increase. But it also to me is logical and makes sense and it is a lot less than that what you were warning us about at the retreat. So I appreciate the 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 work that you all have done.
Go ahead. I've, I've said this over years. I said this, you could look back ten years on my blog about bringing in in-house because, you know, contractors, I I've been a contractor, I've been a consultant. My, my loyalty is to the person that's I'm getting a paycheck from and giving my review. And I'm here to deliver services, but then I'm leaving. And so I've always thought about people that are doing services for the citizens of Dunwoody. Where are their loyalties? And especially in the leadership positions and continuity and succession planning and succession management, just a simple sense of belonging as well. Yes, it makes good economic sense because obviously we've got to have the extra, there's, there's the benefits, but there's the overhead and general administrative fees as well that have to go into play of it. But uh, and and insurance and such not, but um, I think this has been a very thought-out process, been very stepwise fashion, very well thought out. Um, and it does make sense to me. Thank you.
I I'd like to see that, I'd like, because I'm the one that has to sign the contracts for the contracts to be included on this item.
Okay, put it in tonight.
Well, I think it has to be included before you vote.
Yeah, that that's fine. We're actually in good timing for this because it is.
Right, we're way ahead of the schedule. Okay. So uh, I think I need a motion to table. I think it's to table, right? Is table or, yeah, okay. I'm getting used to that word after.
Like to make a motion to table to the next meeting. I'll second that.
Moved by John, second by Rob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you again. Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. That's why my head was turned the other way. I did not hear the voices. All right, uh, anyone opposed? Catherine. All right, so that was six, one, uh, council and Launbacher voted against it. That helps you with your minutes. All right, thank you, Mr. Gates. You are up now. Mr. Gates, is your mic on? Is it green?
It is now.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I thought my, I thought my ears might be going bad. Okay, I thought my ears might be going bad.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, as I was saying, this uh, I'm here for the action of approval of contract award to Addison Smith Mechanical Contractors for additional HVAC integrated controls at the Dunwoody Arts, Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center. Uh, additional temperature control opportunities have been identified for this project, resulting in an increase in the, in the total project cost. The council approved uh, one through seven rooftop units approved for replacement in, at the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. The council in that meeting approved an amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars, which included a ten percent contingency. Once we got out to the job site and started to break down the equipment itself, we ran into some other issues that were identified. First issue was that we were going to go beyond the ten percent uh, contingency figure. And so we asked for options to bring the equipment up to where it is, where where it was at one time. So we received two options. The first option took us about nine thousand dollars over the original two thirty-three, one oh one. And that number was two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Option two uh, took us even further above that number, an additional forty thousand dollars. That took us to a number of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So once we received that information, we went into, we got our team together to start to evaluate where we were and what we had received as a result of actually breaking down the equipment. Uh, so we, we discovered in this, in addition to the age staff had identified opportunity to, well, first of all, and before I say that, we decided on the two, on the two options, one and two, we decided that option two was the best option, even though it was going to cost a little more money. We identified opportunities to improve how we manage the different temperature zones in the facility by using multi-zone variable air volume units with integrated BAC net controls. This means that staff would be able to remedy, remote, remotely access and control the HVAC system. So what I'm saying now is that we chose option two. We, that was the one that we were recommending option two, which is a higher price. Additionally, there, there are feature and trends associated with option two in terms of scheduling and reporting that potentially optimize the energy, energy usage of the system. Uh, previously, it was assumed that the city's energy engineering consultants, previously, it was assumed by the city's engineering consultants that the city would stay with a zone configuration. As compared to the current technology, a zone configuration over time will invariably create challenges for airflow control and could likely increase the long-term potential of the HVAC units. As I indicated, the decision was to go with option two, which is the multi-zone variable air valve units integrated BAC net increases the total project by forty-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars. This, this, this amount is within the city manager's signatory authority to approve. However, I felt it was important uh, to bring this forth to the uh, council, city council for action. This action provides improved energy efficiency, enhanced controls and longer-term system reliability. In addition, this will result in an extended manufacturer warranty with three years coverage on parts, calls and unit controls and five years on the compressors. Uh, funds for this, for this additional allocation will become from parts, general uh, capital. So what we're asking for is, is to this council to improve an award to the contract, the contractor Addison Smith Mechanical and Contractors for additional HVAC integrated controls at the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center in the amount of forty-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars. Authorized staff to provide funding for the contracts, authorize the city manager to execute the necessary components. Now, in this project, we had a consultant that was working for the city on this particular project who provided guidance, if you will, on the best approach there. So that contractor was CPS. Uh, Eric Johnson is here tonight to answer your questions in terms of what was not apparent to the, to the visual eye. Before we actually got into tearing this equipment down, then we found other issues that came up as a result. So with your permission, I would like to ask Eric come up and to address any questions.
Okay, well, let's see if we have any questions. Go ahead, Rob.
I, I do have just some general questions. If if you could remind me, um, what's the current age of the units that are being replaced?
Close to twenty-five years old.
Twenty-five years old, okay. Um, I would be curious to know how much more efficient the new units are. I suspect it's got to be at least fifty percent more efficient. And what the approximate energy bills we have, because I have to think that even with this new cost, we're going to get savings and a quicker, a pretty quick return on this cost. And that's just a statement. It's a question that hopefully someone can confirm. But um, even with this unexpected over cost, I think we're still going to come out ahead in the future.
Well, that's why we're recommending option two because it has enhanced advantages, including energy costs.
Do, Eric, do you want to take a chance at that question? Do you have answers?
Thank you. Excellent job and explained.
Right. Did you hear Rob's question about energy?
I did, I did. I happen to be a mechanical engineer. I'm going to try to stay out of the weeds. I don't know if it's fifty percent, but it's significant. Uh, it's twenty-five-year-old pieces of equipment. Uh, y'all have been uh, uh, doing your best to maintain them, uh, but it is going to be significant energy savings. And i- if you'd like, we can try to go back and actually get, what we typically do as engineers, try to get a payback period when you have, say you spend fifty thousand dollars, what would your normal uh, payback period would be? We can try to estimate that without having to get into all your bills and break out just that uh, building itself. But it will be significant in reliability issues. And one other thing is this back net system, again, without getting too far into weeds, you can remotely control this. So there's an issue you can, you're able to trend stuff and see where a significant issue is. You can, uh, if you want to go to that deep, you can actually go down and have the room temperatures of each specific room. So it gives you a lot of flexibility, just not right now, but in the future too. I, I appreciate that. I was just speaking more from a sustainability standpoint that, um, you know, it's lots of small changes that make a big difference. And I, I, I think this is going to, over the long term, reduce operating costs for the city, which I think is just a net benefit on both sides. So thank you.
Anybody else? It's an action item. Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Stacy, uh, second by Joe. Any further discussion? I will look both ways this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to declare surplus, uh, five PD vehicles and one parks uh, vehicle. These six vehicles have uh, reached the end of their useful life, uh, no longer in service. And uh, they will be disposed of or sold, I should say, in the most cost-effective manner, most likely through GovDeals, our online auction site. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
It's an action item.
Prove.
Move by Joe, second by Rob. Any further discussion? Anybody have discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, can you just, we voted, it passed, Sharon. Can you tell us why we have to vote on this? I mean, does anybody know, like?
These are assets of the city.
Okay.
And so to remove from the fixed asset register, it must be council approved.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. All right, Michael Smith. Yeah, yeah, you're ready. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Vandemere Management has been providing, acting as the construction manager on the Brooklyn Maintenance Facility or otherwise known as the owner's rep, um, during the design phase. And based on their history with the project and performance, we're recommending that they continue to represent the city through the construction phase. They've proposed a fee of three percent of the construction cost, which would not exceed a hundred thousand based on the guaranteed maximum price. It's already been approved. The, this cost is accounted for already in the previously approved project budget. Uh, there is one uh, correction to the memo I want to make that the typical fee, uh, instead of saying five to ten percent, should be anywhere from two to eight percent. But it still stands that they are at the lower end of that. Their fee is at the lower end, that that range depends on the size of the project, the type of project. But um, so we're, we're recommending, and this is coming before you because this would take it over fifty thousand, uh, which would require a council approval.
Any questions? John?
Michael, tell me about this company. I did a quick search on Vandemere Management and had a hard time finding previous work that they've done for us. Are they, uh, they changed their name? What happened here?
No, they haven't done work for us before, and that's why we just originally contracted with them for for the design phase. We wanted to kind of see how it went and how they did and, and get to know, you know, what kind of job they do. They're, they're a fairly um, new company. But they, the um, the owner of the company and his senior staff are, have been in the construction industry for a long time.
Okay, because the subject matter is approval, approval of a contract extension with Vandemere. How do, to me, it sounds like we already have a contract with them and I could not find.
They do, they do for the design.
The design, okay.
Right, right. And so this is taking it over fifty thousand. And so that's, th- this is the first time you've seen it because it was under fifty thousand.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So I just want to make sure that I under clear, uh, like, cleared up. So they, you contracted with them, you know, for the design portion. And just to make sure, because you wanted to see how you worked and they worked, you wanted to make sure that was a good quality company to work with. You feel very comfortable in doing so, so we're extending the contract through the construction of this project that they were already working on.
Correct.
Great. Move to approve.
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Let's keep this project from getting any more expensive. I know, but yeah, it's budgeted, I know. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a discussion item for a franchise agreement with Google Fiber. Uh, they, Google has approached the city. You know, you, some of you may remember a few years back, they put in a trunk line through the city, but we're not providing any uh, in or any service to any people in the city. Now they're looking to do that, and so they want to enter into a franchise agreement with the city. There's a few terms in the agreement that the lawyers are still going back and forth on the language, having to do with the bonding requirement and the um, the term of the agreement, but we're close to having that resolved, but wanted to bring it to council. For any concerns or discussion you may want to have before we finalize the agreement.
Mayor, can I just put one thing in the record? So you know, I, I resist a multi-year contracts without annual way out. I just want you to know, Georgia law and your charter allow you to enter these kind of franchise agreements with utilities. It's a non-exclusive franchise, uh, but the length is allowed under Georgia law thirty-six, thirty-four, two. And in your charter provisions, it's one of the powers that y'all have. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
It says the term of this agreement is one year.
Right, that's, that's what it was. It's going to change based on that discussion. Google.
Right.
Yeah, they're saying we're making a big investment. We can't do that with a one-year contract. Um, so it's, I think the, the proposed language now is going to be a um, fifteen-year or twenty, fifteen or twenty-year contract with five-year renewals after that, which is consistent with some of our original franchise agreements.
Okay. Um, John, do you have your hand up? Sorry.
I just had a question regarding franchise fees and or franchises in general. Basically, tell me about the pole. There's a light, there's a pole in front of my house. It's got wires all over it. I'm guessing the high electrical, the stuff I don't want to touch is way at the top and the, the, the data is at the bottom. There have been companies that have put cables across it in the past, which may now be out of business. Um, when is there a cleanup? Who does, who's responsible? I know at times there have been new poles put in and I've seen poles right next to each other. And thankfully, I was able to request and got a pole or two removed. I don't know how many more of them are still out there. But when is there a cleanup of our, of our pole system and our franchisees? Who's responsible for what and where does this fall into? I mean, there's going to be another wire going to be up on our poles and how is that?
Right, or underground.
Or underground.
Right.
But tell me how the, the pole system works.
So most of the poles are owned by Georgia Power. And so they, they control who goes on it, where they go. And so they, they control who goes on it, where they go, when they have to move, when they get off. So it's really all managed by Georgia Power. The, the orphan pole issue, what happens is Georgia Power will come in and set a new pole for whatever reason, and they'll move their stuff over and they'll tell the telecom companies to move over. And sometimes they move pretty quickly, sometimes they don't. But then even after everybody moves, they're supposed to tell Georgia Power and Georgia Power comes and removes the old pole. A lot of times we have to remind them to make that a priority, which is what you're talking about. We recently gave them a list of 40 poles in the city that needed to be pulled. And I think they've pulled most of those or are in the process of doing that. But that's a, that's an ongoing thing, but Georgia Power controls who attaches to their poles.
Okay, and so since this franchisee may or may not go on the pole, they may or may not go in the ground. If they're going in the ground to the houses, how does that work in the sense of the right-of-way? And then right-of-way repair, is that part of the contract and part of the franchise?
Yes, they, they have, they'll have to get permits from the city when they go to do construction for anything in the right-of-way. And they're responsible for restoring the right-of-way whenever they're done. Or what, you know, if they mess anything up, they're responsible for repairing it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Rob.
I, two questions. The 2% fee, is that typical for this kind of thing?
Yeah, Richard may be able to answer some of those questions. Is that mandated by state law or that's? I know we had Georgia Municipal Association look at what they were proposing from that regard and, and said it was pretty consistent, right?
So.
Yes, we had GMA review it for comparability to other Google contracts that exist.
And that's exactly what I was asking, are we getting the kind of the standard offer? And it looks like that, that adjusts as they're, based on their business volume and whatever they charge, it's their gross revenues, I think.
Yes, exactly.
The, the other question I had was just to follow up on John's, just because I happen to have buried right-of-way. And I usually find out that someone has a permit to work in right-of-way when I see him digging in my yard. Is there any kind of notification process, even just a knock on the door, hey, we're going to be digging up your yard this morning? You know, I don't mind, I understand it's right-of-way, but it's still nice to know what's going on before I see somebody digging a trench into my yard.
Yes, we can, it sounds like what, we haven't seen any plans yet, but it sounds like what Google is planning is a, a pretty large-scale deployment. And so what we've done in the past, because it is disruptive, there will be things torn up based on what we've seen with other utilities. And we just have to make sure that they restore things. But what we've asked other utilities to do in the past is put out signs for the neighborhood or, you know, somehow notify the neighborhood that they're going to be coming in and doing this and giving them a point of contact for any issues that arise.
I, I would appreciate this, just because I think this is going to be pretty large scale, not just the one-off, we're fixing this spot kind of thing.
Tom.
Oh yeah, I want to build off the, the restoration part because I imagine that there's, this is going to be subcontractors doing the work for Google. And we've seen in the past that restoration, what we consider to be properly restored, may not be what the subcontractor or the vendor thinks. So I just want to make sure that the work they're doing, are the terms of restoration clearly defined in the contract? So that we, we can avoid those situations where they come in and, and, and maybe don't put it back to the condition it was beforehand and, and, and creating a mess all over the city?
There's, let's see. There is a repair clause in here. It doesn't say specifically, you know, you must do this and this, but it does say they have to repair it, what, what we've done in the past to hold their feet to the fire. You know, they eventually want other permits from us. We can withhold permits if they're not performing on others. One of the other things, and I should mention, you know, they've already, they've already been working in Brookhaven. And so we've been talking to Brookhaven about how it's going down there. And this agreement that they're proposing is very similar to the Brookhaven Agreement. They, the, one of the things they wanted to change since they did the Brookhaven Agreement was the, the amount of bond they have to provide, which the bond is something that, you know, if they tore some things up and then left town, the city would have a bond that we could go and, the bonding company would provide the money to restore it. So they, they want to, they said their current business practice, they want a, a lower kind of general standing bond. But what we've asked them for in return is say, okay, well, you can maintain a, a $50,000 just background bond. But if you're going to come in and do a big construction project, big enough that we think it's warranted, we can raise that up to 250,000, up to 250,000. So if they're going to do a big deployment, we can ask them to provide a higher bond. You know, as, that's usually a last resort, but that is a protection for the city to say, okay, you've torn these things up and you're not taking care of it. We call your bonding company.
Okay, because I, I just, if, if memory serves me correctly, a few years back, probably several years back, there was some underground utilities being put in. And I'm not going to call out any particular companies, but there were some issues with how they left homeowners' properties. And I think they were resolved by you putting the pressure on, well, you're not getting your other permits. But I'd like, I just wanted to make sure we can avoid, avoid that as much as possible.
Yeah.
Stacy.
I'm just curious, like, do we have any idea what 2% is going to look like? And is this a new revenue for the city?
I, I don't think we have any idea what it looks like. It would be a new revenue.
But it might not be a new revenue because it's, it's, somebody has AT&amp;T right now and they choose Google. It's a replacement. So the only way it becomes new revenue is if they're growing new business, which in Dunwoody, it's hard for me to imagine that there's new business. I mean, it's, it's speculative, right? Some person might not have, well, we actually have a few neighborhoods that aren't served by fiber. So it's possible that Google gets there first because it took AT&amp;T two years to get to the last neighborhood I asked them about. But I'm not sure that, I think it's more of a taking. I think you take from one and give to the other. Go ahead, John, sorry.
No, you're on point. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the fact that sometimes apartment complexes or big facilities will wire entire building. And that would be, you know, Google might get the contract for that building. So every unit is then pre-wired for fiber versus wiring each one for either Comcast or AT&amp;T or dial-up or whatever you're interested in. So is any of that been talked about in the sense of, I guess it's not part of this franchise fee? It's more of a sales aspect, but it's been done in the past. I remember seeing it.
Yeah, we, we haven't seen any plans yet as to where or what they're proposing to do. But they, they have said they would like to start before the end of the year.
So I ran into a Realtor at Kroger on Sunday and he talked about what's the city council doing, all sorts of stuff. And the number one he said to me was, I love Google, Google Fiber. He said that was, that'd be great. It's great for economic development. It's pro-business. There's a lot of benefits to it as well. So he said this was the number one thing he saw on our agenda tonight. And side note, I use T-Mobile Home Internet. It's wireless. It doesn't use any public right-of-way, so I don't, I don't pay a franchise fee for that, but I might flip and go to Google Fiber.
Then you're part of the new, you're part of the good new revenue.
There we go.
All right, so I have, I have thoughts. So when we, 2015 is when Google announced they were coming to Metro Atlanta. We were not chosen. They never really rolled out. This is, I think, a lot of the rolling out is happening now, 10 years later. They put some trunks in. I think they did hit some cities. So, but we wanted it because we had no alternatives. Now we have alternatives. I have been watching this in Brookhaven. It is not such a good project. It's not been so smooth. They've had to do stop work orders. They've hit, which we're familiar with what happens when utilities or anybody works underground, particularly maybe into cab, but I think everywhere, but maybe especially into cab. They hit gas lines that they swear they don't know are there. They hit water pipes and everything else. But they are tearing up people's yards. They are tearing up people's yards. And I'm not, you know, 10 years ago, I was disappointed. John, were you disappointed 10 years ago? Now I'm much more skeptical because, and I wasn't, when we met with Google, whenever that was, when I met with y'all with Google, I wasn't as skeptical, but I have watched Brookhaven and I have seen what it's doing. And I, I wish we could figure out like what, how much of our, how much of our city already has the opportunity to have fiber? Like, is there a way to figure that out? GMA may have that data maybe because that's like the big thing at the state. I'm just curious, you know, we go back to the 2%, but I'm just curious like, and, and when Google Fiber was coming, it was going to be cheaper. And when I looked, when we met with Google, it's the same price as AT&amp;T Fiber and whatever Joe's talking about and whatever Catherine may use. There's no, there's no, you know, back then and 10 years ago, they were promising cheap, cheap, cheap internet. I don't think they do that anymore.
Yeah, I, we've talked to the staff in Brookhaven some about what's been going on down there. And, you know, I don't, I'm, you know, I know they have been, I mean, when they go in and dig, they're going to dig up people's yards. But one of the things that the staff said down there is that they're, they're getting, the, Google's getting a lot of heat for hitting utilities. But in reality, a lot of the things they are hitting is failures in the locating system, not, not Google just tearing things up. So I mean, right, but.
We know, we know this is the cab.
But a lot of it is utility companies either not knowing where their facilities are or not marking them correctly. But, but all those things will happen.
Right.
So if there's, you know, I guess if, if there's additional stipulations you want to put on this, I don't know what they are, but.
I, I think we ought to have an Amis spokesman or something. I mean, I think if we're going to proceed with this, I think there needs to be a clearly defined path for complaints and concerns to be addressed and rectified. And then.
I think one of the things that Google agreed to do in Brookhaven was pay for the city to have somebody that just watches over this, that that's.
Well, we should ask for that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Well, the mayor mentioned the fact of where their infrastructure is and where it's not located. That is a really important thing when it comes to high-speed internet. I don't know, I know for Google, not for AT&amp;T or all fiber as far as that goes, it can be on one side of the block, but it won't be on the other side of the block. There, there's delineations on how far you can be from a cabinet and things of that nature from a technical aspect. I would like to know where that high-speed internet is within our city. If we're doing a franchise, where is it? I mean, I want them to be able to make money, but at the same time, I want to make sure that every resident in our city has the availability of that infrastructure. How do we make that happen? Is there, I mean, we don't need to sign this franchise agreement right now, right? We don't have to, but I'd love to know what they or we know about who has high-speed internet? Where is it located and how can we make any little influence to make sure that the other side of the street gets as much service as the original side of the street? I mean, I would love to have that information, just, just from a small, little, how do we serve our community better by looking at this franchise aspect?
I have, I have a thought just as we're talking here and I, my personal preference is that we figure out a way to make sure we get what we want to protect our residents. But I worry with some of the talk about, do we need to allow this? Are there legal issues at play if we're denying someone the opportunity to do business in the city? When there are other competitors in the city? I mean, we're not allowed to pick and choose the businesses that are allowed to do business in our city. I, I don't know if that's the case. It's just kind of sitting on the back of my mind. I don't know if Ken has a thought on this or, or if I'm just.
Well, I tell you, right now I'm not going to put that on the record, but what I would say is the franchise right is a grant of a privilege. It's not a right and therefore it is different than what you normally think about in contracting.
I, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
So I think we have questions. Do you think you can try to get some answers? And also if Brookhaven has that person over watching them, we would want that person watching over them.
Yeah, I can wait. We'll see. I'm not sure if we can get broadband coverage or we can probably get.
There's some map. There's a state map or something. I don't know what it is.
To the address, but we'll check into that. I mean, I can tell you, and you may already know this, what Google's trunk line currently runs down, Robert Stri, or either Shambly Dunwoody or Roberts, and then it comes through the village and then it comes down Ashford Dunwoody Road. So I would presume that they will be working off of that initially anyway. So, yeah, well, so it sounds like you want to find out more about what current coverage we have now for high-speed.
Yes, and I think there's a state resource that GMA knows, like there's a, because there's been so much federal money for high-speed, which we wouldn't be eligible for because enough of our community has it. But the tool is out there to see, I didn't ever play with it because again, we weren't eligible, but there's a tool. I mean, it would be interesting to see.
But just as a point, we do have one area that does meet the needs. I mean, there is one.
But I think they have enough. I think when I looked, they didn't qualify for that grant.
Okay.
Michael, you may want to consider territorial limits. You may want to shrink the timeframe on the length. And I'm a little bit worried based on what I heard about the shrinking of the bond to 50, if there's mass, whatever. I, I'm simply saying, I heard that tonight. You may want to be able to answer that.
Yeah, the, the general bond is shrinking, but we have, we can get a big bond for construction when they go do construction.
Are they going to permit each, are they going to be permitting each section and there'll be a bond on that section?
That, that's up to us.
We need to think about that.
Yeah.
Okay, we look forward to getting more information. Michelle, you're up.
Good evening. Ready?
Yeah, oh, we're ready. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a supplemental agreement for the design contract for final design on North Schalifer Road Pen. So this is the project laid out. The project was first identified in the Georgetown Master Plan and then in the Dunwoody Trail Master Plan to support pedestrian and bike movement along the corridor to the park. And also will connect with proposed regional trails and paths with our neighbors to the south in Shambly. The project will construct a shared use path on the west side of the corridor, which is at the top of the page, from Cantillon Drive to the existing path just south of Shambly Dunwoody Road. The proposed design will maintain the existing two lanes, one in each direction with a two-way center-left turn lane. The design has incorporated medians in certain areas that are not in conflict with driveways. So those are typically on the southern end of the project near Cantillon. And we will look at opportunities to landscape those medians. The project also includes pedestrian lighting and landscaping and stormwater improvements. So I did want to point out that there is a diagonal crossing for pedestrians right now, existing one at Dunwoody Park. And so this project will introduce a second diagonal crossing at Parnell Court. And so this is to support the pedestrian and bike movement to allow better access to the park. So right now you can see that the majority of the improvements are on the west side. And we really don't show a lot of improvements other than at Parnell on the east side. But we will be reconstructing sidewalk on the east side in those areas that are not ADA compliant. So once we complete the survey database, we'll be able to better identify those areas. So let's go on to the project schedule. So the, this project started in concept design. It was approved by council in May of 24, so almost a year ago, a little over a year ago. And then a couple of months ago in May of 25, we held a public information open house. That was an in-person open house. We had 22 people attend. We had 435 people view our project website page during the open comment period. In total, we received 29 comments. 17 were in support, seven were opposed, one was uncommitted, and there were four expressed conditional supports. The comments ranged from funding, uses, reconstructing a 10-foot facility on the east side, lighting and signing and marking. We do have the responses to that. We do have the responses to that PIOH meeting, um, a letter that has been posted on the city's website. So we have answered all of their comments. Um, we are currently in the comment, or sorry, not comment, concept phase. Um, and we have concept approval in January of twenty-twenty-six. Um, right-of-way acquisition will begin in the summer of twenty-seven and construction will begin in the spring of twenty-nine. So I do want to remind you guys, this is a federal project and that is why there is such a long timeline on this product. So staff is recommending the approval of the supplemental agreement for the design contract with AECOM. So this is a final design fee, um, and the fee came in at one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand. We are asking for a five percent contingency fee, which would be fifty-six thousand for a total project budget increase of one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand. We currently have nine hundred and sixty thousand in federal dollars. Um, and we have six hundred and eighty-seven thousand in local dollars, which we have budgeted in the five-year capital, um, budget that is being funded through SPOS. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Joe?
So Michelle, the final, um, just go back to the timeline, uh, clarification. It is a, uh, January twenty-sixth is the next time. It says concept approval?
Yes, it's concept approval by G-DOT. So, yes, sorry, I should have put G-DOT concept approval to like clarify, yes.
So when's the next time this would ever get back to council? Or are there other further, uh, public, uh, is, uh, will there be any other public open houses? And, or when would be the next time it would, that will this come up to council?
There will be no other public information open houses. Um, this design is pretty much set. And then now we'll go to database, like survey database, where we'll put it all on preliminary plans. Um, so the next time it will come to council is with a construction contract.
And the funding for that construction is primarily federal?
It is federal. We are, um, asking for additional dollars to federal dollars. Yes, and we'll, from ARC.
So we've got four years to spin up to that.
Yes.
Funding cycle.
So, um, ARC will have another open solicitation, um, this, next year sometime. And so we will be asking for additional construction dollars to support that.
And in our current five-year CIP SPOS funding, are, are we on track? Are we fine with what is currently in local funding for this?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Really all we have, because it's gonna take us about five years to get up there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that's John.
Michelle, I was looking at the, uh, the map, the drawing, and there's a couple areas, there's a couple medians that look like they're part of the project, but I don't understand them. Can you explain those to me?
The medians over here in this area.
Yeah, there's two, but, yeah, there's, uh, they're sort of on the, uh, far left side. There's.
So, um, those would be the, um, the medians I mentioned earlier that we're able to put in, so they're not in conflict with the driveway. And so we'll look at, um, just as, it's kind of supporting the, the left turn lane that we have in here and.
Okay, uh, so. Yeah, I was trying to.
Is that better?
Yeah, right, there you go.
Yeah, so you see how there's a left turn lane and so we have to widen out. Um, and so instead of like kind of widening out and widening back in, we kept that median in there.
Well, Schalifer is basically three lanes all the way across. I mean, all the way down. It's three lanes with the suicide lane down the middle.
One in each direction and then there's typically a two-way left turn lane in the center. And so we kept that for the majority of the corridor, just because of all the driveways. We'd be like cutting off some access or limiting access. But in this area, we don't have any driveways that we would be limiting access to. So we opted to put in some medians and then we'll look at landscaping those medians.
Again, I'm good with medians. The only question I really have though is that intersection at Schalifer and two eighty-five is supposed to be the on-ramp for the new, uh, uh, express lanes for the amount of traffic that might be coming down Schalifer. At some point, we may or may not want to make decisions about narrowing it down to two lanes. I mean, I guess there's not much we can do anyway. I'm just trying to make sure that we're not putting a whole lot of infrastructure in the middle of the street when we really don't know the traffic flow when the excess road gets built and there's an entrance there.
So as part of this project, we do, um, coordinate with the, the top-end team. And so they'll have our plans and so then if we need to adjust, I mean, in all honesty, it's also, um, it's up to the developer too. So it's, it's kind of an unknown factor for them.
And I'm work, I, uh, if it's up to, it's not up to me, it's not up to us, but if they don't, that is not a priority entrance and exit ramp from our transit vision. And I don't think we need it frankly, because, so I'm hoping that they just move on down. Yeah, that's.
Peachtree Industrial.
Yep, well, working on that too. But the developer could also come in like they just did on the north section of four hundred and add a bunch. So we'll see. I, I think it's a ways away. This will help us connect across two eighty-five, correct? That's this, this trail will get people to, to, two eighty-five pretty much?
It will get us to Cantillion.
Cantillion, yeah, okay, alright.
Moved to approve.
It's a discussion.
Yes. I'll be back next week.
Consent.
Or two weeks, sorry, I'll be back in two weeks.
Consent? Okay. It does, there's no action.
It's late, it's okay.
It's not late, actually, it's only eight o'clock. Um, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, public comments? Anyone want to speak in public? Seeing no one, city manager comments?
No comments, Mayor. We do not need an executive session.
Uh, council comments. Catherine?
Happy birthday, Chief Mike Carlson. Milestone birthday. You look good. Thanks.
Okay. Um, happy birthday. Happy birthday. I want to thank, uh, Dunwoody Tavern and the Dunwoody Police Foundation and everyone who came out to the fundraiser for Detective Laverdy's family on Saturday night. Um, I know that the family feels very supported. I know our police department appreciates the community support. And that's all I have. I need a motion to adjourn unless somebody else has something.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Rob, second by Catherine. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I called a question. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Thank y'all.